One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistock?
Here.
Mr. Bass?
Here.
Mr. Carson?
Here.
Mr. Frye? Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mrs. Smith? Mrs. Love?
Here.
We have a citizen's comment.
Larry Ansel.
Good evening. My name is Larry Ansel and I address you tonight as a taxpayer, a parent, and as a teacher who dedicates herself to the students in the community of Southmore School District. To say it's been a shaky start to our school year would be an understatement, I think. We all need to kind of just laugh at times whenever the craziness happens. But I think that beginning with tough decisions that were finalized in June, I feel that the domino effect of some poor planning on everybody's part has kind of caught up with us. Sometimes things are out of our control, other times things are self-inflicted. I want to draw special attention to our delivery of curriculum using technology at the high school on a one-to-one basis. When I was hired as a STEM teacher here, I was tasked with the goal of getting our kids on par with 21st century learning, which basically means they can learn anywhere at any time. Chromebooks seem to be the answer to my prayers. Whenever I was hired and I heard about them, I'd be able to eliminate paper by having textbooks online, mere delivery of college classes that I had just recently taken, and then I'd be able to increase access to kids at home that otherwise wouldn't have had it. For the first time, every kid in our district would have equal access to the curriculum. Chromebooks allowed students to continue working on assignments throughout the day between periods and practice and work. They allowed engagement with teachers even outside of classroom, clarify questions even if it was 10 o'clock at night and I happened to check my email. Remember, not everybody in this district has the most expensive computer and the brand-new iPhone walking around with them. For some, the Chromebooks that could be taken home were the answer that they needed. Unfortunately, that was not the case for every student. With some poor planning, I think, on everybody's part again, and a narrow scope of implementation, Chromebooks were returned inoperable and now are sitting in storage with cracked screens, missing keys, and batteries that don't work. My fear is that they will be added to the growing piles of unused computers and dated operating systems that are filling the third floor of the high school. There are currently proposals in place to address students being able to bring their own devices to school, but that's just part of the solution. What about the kids that don't have that option? Three kids in a family, computers are still expensive. What's the plan for them? What are you going to do? And our technology department is understaffed. All two of them can barely keep us afloat. They work miracles every day. They truly do. So I ask the board, do we have a long-term plan for instructional technology in our district? What's the Chromebook policy moving forward? What do we do with the ones that are broken? How do you plan to keep providing the resources to kids? And what do you want? How do you want them to be competitive if you don't give them the technology that they need? I say start a conversation that will actually include stakeholders like teachers, parents, and dare I say, the students themselves. After all, they are the ones using them. I'd be happy to start that conversation. My room's 146th at the high school. I'm there all the time. My door's open, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Madam President, can I ask a question of the administration?
Yes.
I heard this week from a student, which is my daughter, so I'm not taking anybody out of context, that the Chromebooks are not being given out this year. They're staying in the classrooms. I mean, we invested all this money for our students to have the Chromebooks to take home, like Mr. Ansel said, so...
With the breakage right now, there is not enough for every kid to have one, so we decided that right now, we are looking at electronic usage policy also. That right now, the best approach would be to place them in classroom packs so that the kids still have access to them, and then we will move forward in seeing how we're going to implement bringing your own devices into that scheme of things.
So then all the money we put out for those that got broken, there's no way we can recoup that money by the parents or whatever?
We're looking at ways to do that.
Are we going to give them to students who don't have technology to bring in? Then will they maybe be allowed to take them home?
I think currently, and I don't know if there's a high school principal right here, but I think currently, right now, that they, the kids have the ability to check them out. They have to sign them out and then return them the next day. They're just not going to be given carte blanche, where they'll be giving to them and then they have access to them at a unlimited time.
Thank you.
People that's talked to me about this, and sometimes when they're handed the Chromebooks out, they're broke when they go off, and they paid the money to get them fixed because they want their child to have the Chromebooks at home. But if they're handed back in and they're not properly, what do you want to call it, checked before they're put away, then there we are, stuck with them when they're a broken home. And that's what I don't really like about it because of the fact that if a kid broke at home, they turn it in, and then we're stuck with the bill for whatever we don't have enough because they're not being taken care of.
The process that we used, and I speak for this at the middle school because I'm most familiar with it. Shirley Stitt, who was the librarian last year, when kids, we brought kids down by their language arts classes. And when they were brought down into the library, she used the scanner that she uses to check out books. We assign kids that Chromebook via that means. So when the kid brought their Chromebook in, she scanned it to make sure that it was their Chromebook first, and then she checked it for damage. From there, she recorded. She was pretty meticulous on taking notes of what was broken and what wasn't broken. And then, you know, it was said, well, from the time that the Chromebook was handed in to the time that it was got back that it was broken, she took the Chromebook, put it on a cart, and put it on a shelf in the library office. So there would have been very limited possibility of anything happening to that Chromebook once it was turned in and checked for proper usage.
Okay. Did we ever institute, and I don't think we did, a policy that as we lost these Chromebooks through attrition, that we were replacing so many every year? And if we're going to go forward with the Chromebooks, maybe that's a policy that we need to look at is, you know, start buying or replace the ones that are broken?
I was the first wave of the implementation at the middle school. When I was asked to implement it, it was with the understanding that the middle school would be the first school that would start the Chromebook program. The high school would move to the second phase of it, and then the third phase would be the elementary school. Obviously, the cost of Chromebooks is pretty prohibitive, so it never, the wave never got into the elementary sector. It was supposed to be two through five. So it kind of ended at that point, and as far as the refurbishing and replenishing of them, I don't know where that process went stagnant.
So here's the thing. You know, we're trying to protect the lower income people from all this havoc. Chromebooks, they're not free. Pay for them, pay a deposit on them. You have to have Wi-Fi at your house to pay for them, to get them to work. So therefore, your low-income people, which we are 80% of the income in the district, they can't, they don't have Wi-Fi. They don't have Wi-Fi yet.
I don't think you need Wi-Fi to use them.
No.
To do some certain things you do.
If a teacher sets up the Chromebook assignment, the Chromebook, the documents work offline. Their flash memory within the Chromebooks allows them to edit a document at home, do a reading, for example, do test questions, whatever. Allows them to edit that at home, and then as soon as it catches Wi-Fi from anywhere, it uploads into cloud.
That was part of my second question, Mr. Ansel. Thank you. You know, we could hear from 12 different teachers in the district that asked why these things work. Maybe you can reiterate, how do we pay for it?
How do we pay for it?
Yeah. Because we're on a urgent bankruptcy.
I think the biggest thing is that the way that the Chromebooks were rolled out, Mrs. Stitt was one person dealing with Chromebooks for the entire district, and she's no longer at the high school. So for example, the Chromebooks that were turned in the high school, from what I can tell, who passed them back out beginning of the year, they've got postcodes, missing a key, cracked screen, and things like that. Those are the physical signs. I would say the ones that I got from my classroom, there's probably five or six that actually doesn't charge. You wouldn't know that unless you actually plugged it into a charger, pulled the charger and then died, type deal. How to pay for them? I don't, I think we might have to eat the ones that are broken because we don't have the weight to go back and get a senior that's already graduated. But I think to pay for them moving forward, I think you have to implement some type of policy where the security clause will pay upfront or an obligation is written that they don't get them for a car until they turn in and make that obligation right. Because we can't fix 100 Chromebooks every year. As a taxpayer, I don't want to fix 100 Chromebooks.
But you understand we're in a poverty area.
Absolutely. So moving forward, there has to be some type of accountability. And while I have my soapbox here, I don't think the students were consulted enough to hear what they wanted because middle schoolers, they would rather use their phone because the way the information goes, they, it just didn't work with the middle school. And at the high school, the kids have a little bit more of that authority where they kind of understand, you know, life's coming down on them here in a couple of years, so there's a little bit more level of that authority. But I think a deposit upfront that has the obligation held to a diploma, moving up a grade, whatever you want to call it, I think that's how you move forward. I don't know if we can fix the ones behind it, because I understand the situation.
Madam President?
Thank you.
The other question I had, I know was still undecided last I had heard. When the seniors graduated, they were deciding, like, were they going to sell them to the seniors? Were they going to bring them back? What was the final answer on that?
They, we decided that they were going to remain with the school.
Okay, so we at least have those.
Yeah, in fairness to the process, also in talking to some parents of juniors and seniors that whose children are looking to go to colleges, they are starting to become more inclined to want to purchase their own computers with the idea, checking what the colleges, what needs the colleges themselves would be having. So they want to, they want to try to think ahead and provide their child with their own device that is going to be not only suitable for the high school level, but also transfer over into the college sector. So I've had a lot of conversations with parents that are more inclined to want to do that.
But to follow up on that, a lot of colleges will give you a laptop when you start there, so...
I wish they'd have done that with my son. Cost me a fortune.
Hey, it's real simple. It's a great idea, great concept. I love it. Can't afford it. I mean, it doesn't take rocket science for you to stay that way. It costs money for us to have these Chromebooks in high school. We don't have the money to do that. Like, we're already upside down, so why even talk about it?
We buy bulk. Can we get a discount that's passed on to the parents? That's one question I'll throw out there. The other question is, how many Chromebooks do we need right now to fulfill any kind of going forward?
I mean, I think there's most teachers that, and given, not all teachers use them in classrooms either, and like Jim, the teacher, doesn't use them the same way that the Piggles use them, right? Obviously, but as far as, I think the teachers have them in their classrooms now, and there are other computers in the district, like the laptops, for example, Mr. Sheridan uses. Those computers, the Chromebooks can't run that software for CAD, and he's the one running CNC machines and taking kids to robotics competitions, not even using the Chromebooks. So with Chromebooks right now, yeah, we have enough that teachers can use them, but those Chromebooks are eventually going to need repairs, even if they're just being housed in my room. I have three at least in my room that have to be plugged in before they die.
Well, how many, how many do we need for this year to satisfy what you want?
I honestly don't know if I can answer that question without knowing exactly how many are out, you know, how many are damaged, how many can't be repaired. I don't know if I can answer that.
Those are a couple $300, right? They're not high-end.
No, they're not, they're not high-end, but they're still $300, you know, like they still are...
Well, what I wanted to bring up is, and I don't want to jump ahead, but there's an agenda item in here that will cost us $26,000 later on in this agenda that might be put to better use if that, we can buy some Chromebooks that way.
But if I may add, as Mr. Mash has said, seniors and juniors in particular, they've been asking, we've got the Wi-Fi in the building, and I know the policy is coming through. If you have kids able to bring their own technology, that will help offset the need because the junior or senior that's getting ready to go to school, they're going to want to have their own stuff, and they can afford their own because they are working too. Freshers and sophomores can't go work at ECU yet. So junior or senior that has a little disposal income that is looking ahead, would that be YOT policy? That's going to help offset that. But that's also going to put more pressure on our tech department to be dealing now with, you know, they're going to be dealing with another barrier. So I don't know how many we need if kids want to set up a new YOT. Not asking for you to spend that money right off the bat, I was just wondering if the conversation...
The best thing we can do is when we start to budget, start looking at this. Right now, I guess we don't need it. I mean, we need it, but put it in the budget, work on it as we go through the year, see where we stand, and how many we need, and what we're going to need for next year. Because this year, the way the gentleman talked, he has enough to do in this year so far. So let's just move on with this, then look at it as we go and see what we need.
I also believe that the middle school, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Kure, but we also have enough to sufficiently staff the needs at the middle school.
Some teachers are sharing because there aren't enough to distribute and enough classsets to each teacher that requested them, so they are sharing some of them.
Most of Richard's are broke.
There are some that are broken, again, that were turned in from last year.
I would like to, growing up, I always had a sense of responsibility, okay? And that was ingrained in me by my parents. We give a device to individuals that don't take care of that piece of equipment, and I have, to me, that is a problem there. Because their parents are not financially responsible for it, sometimes people have the tendency not to take as good a care of it if there's not something linked to it. I just wish we can instill a greater sense of responsibility. This, Mr. Ansel is correct because this is the future. We also have to get kids to understand that there's a responsibility that's linked to that piece of future.
They sure don't lose their cell phone to beat them up, if you know what I mean.
Well, I don't know. They beat them up.
It's like everything else. A project, I do whatever. The bottom line is, that's the bottom line. If we ain't got the money, we ain't buying it. No matter how much responsibility you put on a seventh grader, if there's any responsibility for the district to pay any of the front to fund these things, it can't happen. It can't, no, it can't happen. It's that simple. You don't buy things when you're broke. You don't buy things when you're broke. No matter how much, how important they are to you, you wouldn't do it in your own household. You can't do it here. You can't buy things when you don't have the money to buy. It's that simple. It doesn't matter how we rationalize it or how we make sense of it. If the money's not there, we can't buy. Mr. Ansel, I applaud you, buddy, but you still got it. There's no money. There's nowhere to get it from. Unless we just dig further in debt. And that's where we're at right now. We're in debt. We're in debt up to our eyebrows. Anyone come up here and just beg for money, beg for money, beg for money, this thing, here's great, this is great, this is great. We can't pay for it. We have no money. We are broke. It's that simple. There's no sugarcoating it. Make it feel good, and rub it down, and we're broke. Let's move on to the next, move on to the next item.
Moving on. Minutes?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the minutes for the August 9th and August 16th, 2018 board meetings.
Accounts? Fund accounting check summary?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the August 2018 fund accounting check summary.
July 2018 treasurer's report?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the July 2018 treasurer's report.
June 2018 general fund expenditures and revenue report?
The board will be asked to consider the approval of the August 2018 board summary general fund report.
Board reports? Superintendent information that will be given?
I have included a number of documents attached to my report. I do have a couple of things that I would like to share. I would like to thank Pastor Lee Klein in the men's club at the Center Bethel Church for their support of our students in need through the backpack program. I know that they are getting ready to distribute those.
Here's today's.
Yeah. And I thank them for that. I want to thank them for providing a spaghetti dinner for our football players and coaches. The food was delicious and the fellowship was great. I also want to thank Larry Gross and the Sharpening Stone Men's Ministry of Center Bethel for their donation of facial tissues for our schools. I would like to thank Lee Mizwell and his staff for all their assistance during the high school mold incident. For those of you that might not be aware, mold was discovered in the high school band and chorus room. It became necessary to cancel classes at the high school on Tuesday, August 28th, and Wednesday, August 29th until proper containment measures were in place and cleanup began. Classes resumed on Thursday, August 30th upon receipt of safe air quality levels in the high school, which I've included on my report. I've applied to the PA Department of Education for an emergency waiver for those days due to unsafe conditions within the high school, and just this afternoon, I received verification and acceptance of the waiver from PDE. The scope and extent of the cleanup will most likely result in an insurance claim being made with the Furio Mongel, and I will keep you posted on that.
Ansel, on that same topic, is there a reason that kids still are not allowed to band room?
It's still undergoing the process. It's still going, undergoing the cleanup process. They had to tear the carpeting out, replace the ceiling tiles, so it was quite an extensive process.
You might want to mention about the instruments?
Oh, yes.
They were not stored in there for the most part? Because I did get some calls about that.
The instruments that the band was using or were using, when they were taking out that day, anyone that was possibly contaminated was cleaned, and then Mr. Harris stored them in the trailer. So nothing that should have came in contact with a student should have came in contact by, we took extra special precautions to make sure that that was the case. And anything that was possibly contaminated, I do believe, last weekend, all materials were placed in there, and I'm not quite sure what it is called, but the company, Belfour, that is doing the cleanup process, set off these cleansing bombs that should have taken care of all, they were mold eaters, so to speak. So hopefully, we have all that, all the mold and everything under control there. There's still a little bit of a dampness in there. Obviously, last week wasn't very conducive to drying out, so the humidifiers are still running in there, so hopefully cleanup efforts are going to be finishing here real soon. Mr. Mizwell is working with Mr. Marnell to apply for a grant to test and remediate all potable drinking water outlets in our district through the Women's for a Healthier Environment Grant. I would like to thank them for their assistance in that. I would like to thank the faculty, staff, and administration of the primary center for their assistance last week during the high heat days we experienced. All efforts were made to ensure our students were made as comfortable as possible, and conditions were monitored on a continual basis. I would also like to thank Charlie Swinkie. And I spent a lot of time on the roads this week checking out road conditions due to the rain, so thank you, Charlie, for riding with me, showing me the roads in the district. I would like to thank Greg Kiefer and Dan Clara for initiating the process which allows the district to apply for several grants through the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, which is linked to Act 44. This is a two-step process. Part A, which is a meritorious application, is only for school districts making an application to receive a minimum grant allocation of $25,000. And I attended the superintendent's cabinet this morning, and it was pretty much indicated that that is a sure deal if districts apply for that, so that's a positive there. There's also a Part B, which is a competitive application, which is for all eligible school entities, including school districts seeking additional funding beyond their Part A application. So we can apply for both, and the possibility would be, I think there's $60 million in grants through the state, so we can possibly get up to an additional 10%, so that we might be able to get $60,000 in grants through this application process. And I think Mr. Clara and Mr. Kiefer have been working on it, and we will continue to work on that to make that a reality if possible. I attended the Professional Advisory Committee meeting at Central West Borland, CTC, and was asked to be on the committee to review the center's enrollment and personnel needs. They saw the new guy and they tasked him with the responsibility. An initial pre-budget meeting was held this past Monday to start evaluating the district's financial status. I wanted to thank Mrs. Love, Mrs. Rhodes, and Mr. Claro for attending the meeting. The administrative team is attempting to establish a new culture and climate in our schools. The following measures have been taken. Limits on the amount of copies made to save on paper usage and printing costs. Secure printing is being used to determine how paper is being used and by whom. Banner sheets were eliminated from all printing jobs, and we have limited purchases of supplemental instructional materials since many resources can be found through Teachers Pay for Teachers and on PDE website under the Standards Aligned System tab for minimal or at no cost. So we're looking at cheaper and no-cost solutions to still providing quality curriculum and education for our students. I attended the monthly superintendent meeting at WIU 7 this morning, and I have included a link to PASBO's Act 55 School Directors Training Module. That was at the end of my superintendent report that I sent to you. I will gladly sit with any and all board members to assist them in progressing through the training modules. If you give me a call, I will sit down with you and assist you in any manner that I can. But there is a link on the information I sent to you that you can go directly there, link on it, and if you want to start your trainings yourselves. That's my report.
Vince, I have a question. On your free and reduced chart that's on there for the students that receive free and reduced lunch?
Yes, sir.
I just have a question. That number determines our, how we determine students that are in poverty? Is that, is that one of the factors?
Those that are eligible, yes, that is.
Is that the only factor? Or is there another one?
That is a big indicator of it, yes.
Okay. So those numbers work like 50, if we average them out, it's about 53% that are in the poverty?
Yes.
Okay.
Economically disadvantaged, that's 53% economically disadvantaged.
A little business. Solicitor's report, sorry. Couple of things. Right to know officer, Mrs. Larson, received another right to know request from Mr. Simon Campbell, asking for some documents, several of which appear to be materials which the school district purchased from PSBA as part of its process of going through the review of all the policies and obtaining recommended policies from them and updates and things of that nature pursuant to a contract that was entered into a few years ago. Along with that, and included in the 41-page-plus right to know request, was what Mr. Campbell characterized as petitioning government, in which he's laying out his point of view about PSBA and what he views as being unfavorable about the way they do business, which is, you know, his business, and I'm not here to comment on that. What's complicating this further is that the materials were purchased under contract, and in the contract, there is lots of language about copyright and... and in the contract, there is lots of language about copyright and confidentiality and trade secrets and things of that nature that would cause the release of the materials to be problematic. To further complicate it, the school district received and forwarded to me guidance materials from PSBA, saying that they do not waive those rights under the contract and do not necessarily agree that these are records or that they should be subject to the Right-to-Know Act. Now, there's one area in there where there's a request where it's a different kind of category and may likely be subject to being disclosed. But for that reason, because we now have competing claims and a potential for litigation, I would like to discuss that a little bit in executive session. And the materials related to this are in executive content. The right-to-know request itself can be released and made part of the view for the public also, because that is, a right-to-know request would be a public option. At some point, when you are deciding whether or not to have an executive session, just to sort of cover that so that I don't forget, if I may, I wouldn't want to comment or confer with you in executive session in regards to settlement of the litigation concerning Linda Mutai, which was two lawsuits in common police court, and also about a potential for litigation concerning Rhodes dealing with the school building in Rufftown. I also requested to Mr. Mashia that I could be able to confer with him further about one of the policies that's on the agenda, so I won't be commenting on that tonight and see if we can kind of work out some of the issues. Thank you.
Thank you. School Law Workshop.
The solicitor is requesting attendance at the annual School Law Workshop pursuant to his employment. Next week, you will be asked to approve his attendance at that workshop.
Old business. Pay-to-play procedure clarification.
I was asking if the board could give clarification. There seems to be some confusion and ambiguity to where the monies are to be funneled for the pay-to-play, and I was asking if you could please give the administration some clarification, since there is some confusion.
Well, my understanding was, as I've had phone calls about it and people asking about it, was that the money raised for pay-to-play would go back into the general fund. It has nothing to do with the athletics. It's back in the general fund. And I've had a couple people, you know, that are raising money now to pay for assistant coaches. And me, speaking on the term, I don't think that's a good idea. I don't think you should be paying for assistant coaches with fundraising, because my understanding is if you raise $14,000 in pay-to-play, you're more than likely going to cut the budget by $14,000 next year on the sports side. And they're like, what do you mean? And I'm like, I wouldn't get used to paying your assistant coaches out of fundraising, because we don't know what next year holds. We may be buying uniforms with the money for pay-to-play. So if pay-to-play generates $10,000, $10,000 coming off of the sports academics, the sports budget. Maybe I'm wrong, but the way I understood it was it's going right back into the general fund. It's not like a cushion for the sports. I know it's a very sensitive topic, I understand that, but people do need clarification. That's my clarification, is the money goes right back in, because you can't. I'm open for whatever you guys want to say and think.
I think that's what we agreed on, at least that's how I understood it, that it went back into the general fund. And it didn't go to the athletic department.
I was under the assumption that it was going to help the athletic department, because we were having trouble with golf and cross-country and tennis. And that was going to help with the athletic fund, but.
The way, excuse me, the way I understand it, the way I'd like to see it be, I'm going to be very bold about this. Every, like the band, the football, everybody else, them boys play to pay or play in the band. Very simple. Put it in the band fund, put it in the football fund, wherever they're paying to play.
Right.
If they need anything, take it out of there during the year, because them boys are playing the sport, girls or whatever. And then after the year's over, what's left, put it back in the athletic fund, because then that's going to help the budget for next year, instead of trying to buy anything this year, and you don't have the money. Take it out of the funds it was raised for, and then at the end of the year, put it back in the athletic fund or whatever you decide to do.
Mr. Swink, we, Mr. Swink and I had a conversation the other day, and there are several challenges. And Charlie, do you feel comfortable sharing some of those challenges?
Right now, collecting the money has been, actually, my words, pretty good. We have over 259 students who've paid, whether it was, you know, middle school or high school. But the problem is now, and that was my question, as we get to the end here, and we have several students, one that don't pay and two that can't pay, what's the options that we do? I mean, is it going to be, there has to be a deadline that we say, okay, if we don't have your payment by September 15th, you no longer can participate? Or, you know, when I have a student come up to me and say that I absolutely cannot get the money, what's the options that we have for that? I know it's very challenging, and I, you know, that's my question. Most of them were pretty good. Like I said, we had 259 students, but at this point, now we're down to the crunch time, and it was just kind of looking for some guidance there, because I know, you know, obviously, we don't want to take somebody and tell them that they're not able to play, in my opinion, but that's where we kind of stand. We're looking, like, you know, the band, and then you talk about putting it into different budgets, and it's very simple with the band, because we got band, we got athletics. But to take it and say, okay, we're going to put it in football, we're going to put it into tennis, we're going to, some of these kids play three sports, and you take $15 or $20 and try to break it down, it's pretty tedious. If you look at what Mrs. Love was talking about, we did cut our athletic supplies down this year to cover some of the budget, where if we put that back in, that's where I'm assuming that we could make up some of this for what we may need down the road that comes up. And if we don't spend it, then it does stay in the supply. But I mean, that was the, because when we first talked about it, I was under the same assumption, it was going into the general fund. And so that was some of the questions I had for Mr. Mashia and, like I said, moving forward. But 99% of the people have been very cooperative, they've given us the checks. Now we're just down to that final little bit, and what we really want to do as an organization and a school district, because we really didn't talk about that.
Well, I don't think it's fair that we're charging our athletic parents, basically, we're charging our athletic parents to pay more towards a deficit. Like, I understand if we ask them to pay more towards the athletic deficit, but why should, why should, and I guess I'm speaking more as a parent, why should I have to pay my taxes and then on top of that, pay because my child is in an athletic program towards the deficit? I'd rather, if he's paying to play, then that money should stay in the athletic and cover the athletic deficit. Just my opinion, and that's what I thought it was doing.
Well, if it's in the general fund, then Charlie submits his budget and it comes out of there. I mean, that's how I feel about it. I mean, he's going to get his budget from the general fund every year, so instead of him subtracting or taking a percent or two, you know, to lower it, you know, he'll have the same budget, comes out of the general fund. And having an account for each sport, that's too much. But, you know, like I said before, I thought it was, I believed it to be that it was going into the general fund, because he's still going to submit his budget and it's going to come out of the general fund.
Yeah, and if it did, we saved, the sports needed saved, everyone's happy at the end of the day, but bottom line is, we probably didn't charge quite enough for pay-to-play, and it's only going to go up with inflation. But we're not in, you know, in an entitlement, you know, community where you're entitled to add these sports. But honestly, I mean, my kids are playing sports since they were little kids, like getting to kindergarten. We paid, we paid, we paid. And as soon as you get to middle school, ah, let's just put it on the taxpayer to pay to let them play the sports. It's just not a good, it's just not a good, you know, thing to follow. I think everyone has to pay. You have to pay to play. And I don't think we started off high enough. I think it should have been $100 a kid, $100 a sport, 50 for extras. You know, because the bottom line is, you know, tennis don't generate nothing, golf's not generating anything, cross-country's probably don't generate anything. It's.
Yeah, but what do they need other than, okay, just like there was football and everybody else, they need a lot more equipment, right?
I know.
So if we put it in the athletic fund, you only have to take a little bit out for those two sports. But when you talk about football and everything else, put it in the general account and all at once, oh, it's not there, we spent it for something else. That's garbage.
I know, but, you know, hey.
Well, there's no sense arguing about it.
If I had a kid in cross-country, had to pay $100 because there were only five kids in it, I'd pay it, you know?
We've got something implemented now, so we can go on with it, instead of sitting on our duff here and there.
The biggest problem I have with the whole thing is, we have parents out there fundraising to pay assistant coaches. You know, they shouldn't be doing it. Like, I've cautioned them, I said, don't do that.
Well, you caution, you do a lot of stuff like the baseball field.
Just don't do it. Don't, you know, there's no guarantees.
One thing about this whole thing, it comes down to one thing. The kids at this school district, to get them to get involved in stuff and get them off the street.
I agree.
That's the way I look at it, and I'm going to go down.
I totally agree with you, which I do. When you're broke, you're broke.
Well, it was kind of like when you talk about the price. I mean, we did say that, and obviously, it's something that you can revisit each year moving forward. But again, like I said, from day one, I was always against that. I don't believe in it as much, but I understand the situation we're in, because again, I think every student wants to play, should have an opportunity to play, but.
Go ahead. To address your issue of those that can't pay, after 30 years of volunteering for the gross softball league, you know, we have fundraisers, and I mean, for whatever amount of those children that you have that can't pay, I mean, it could be so simple as, if you go up to GFS, they have those boxes of candy, there's 36 in a box. I think you make $72 on the box, sell two bucks apiece, something along those lines. I mean, we just buy a number of those boxes and give them to them, sell them. I mean, there's no kid that should be able, or wants to play, should not be stop or play, and that is the solution we use for decades in our softball.
And again, that's what I'm saying, I'm just looking for, you know, guides, because whenever we decide, that's what I'll make sure happens.
If I might just add, my son also played sports for all his life, and whenever he was playing Little League Baseball, there was a fee associated with that, but they also, we could have paid the fee outright, but there's also fundraising alternatives and possibilities. I'm not sure we provided that to our students. We asked them to pay, but I don't know if there was the alternative, if they couldn't, and I think we're starting to run into those situations where families just don't have the means. And to be totally honest with you, there might be some families that just aren't going to do it. So, you know, there's an equity issue also, the people that can't afford it and the ones that are just going to refuse to do it. So, I mean, we really need to, I think, better plan how we're going to approach this moving forward, because there are some holes that we're starting to see.
Well, Charlie, I wanted to ask you about these sports. A lot of them have the boosters, and they fundraise. I was wondering if that could be something that the boosters might be able to help the athletes with that can't, that can't come up with the money. But I agree with Mr. Mashia, that I think that there are areas that we need to fine-tune here. I mean, we're into it, but I think we need to fine-tune it, so I agree with you, I think we need to look at that.
I, I've had some of that come up already, and the questions I'm getting back is if we fundraise for a kid that plays softball or football, and then he plays softball or she plays softball, whatever it may be, why didn't they have to give money back or pay themselves?
Well, why can't we, why can't we set up some kind of fundraising for them? Like you said, Ken, it's easy to sell candy.
Yeah. What we did was, before the season ever started, before the school starts, you know, those kids that are going to sign up for a sport, when they came in, they either paid their fee right there on the spot, and if they couldn't afford it or didn't want to pay it, they took the candy, or whatever fundraising.
Right.
Choose to go with. Candy's usually the easiest.
Right.
You can make double the money on the box of candy, and that pays for at least most of the fee that we charge.
I think Charlie's asking what to do now, you know, I mean, that's maybe for next year or something like that, you know? I was going to suggest, I know you reached out to those other schools to give us an idea of how to do our pay-to-play originally, you see what they're going for that.
I know some of them do have, where they actually set up a payment plan, you know, more so over the year, you don't have to pay all at once, just pay a little bit at a time.
That would be fine.
But again, that's the accounting part, you got to make sure we stay on top of it, but that's an option.
How much does that generate so far, Charlie? 259 kids?
Right now, we're sitting, what I turned in, we're about $10,700.
You know, we go round and round about this stuff, but we're hemorrhaging money badly, and it's not in sports. It's, there's other areas we're really hemorrhaging bad. And we can nickel-and-dime people to death for pay-to-play and this and that. We've got serious problems besides sports. And I applaud you, Charlie, what is it going to do for doing what you do? But we're not going to find the answers to our problems with sporting. It's not going to happen. We have bigger issues, we have way bigger issues, tens of thousands of dollars of issues, not nine, 10 grand. I mean, that's, I think, after we had the original budget, didn't we have last month or last weekend, another child movement in the district for another $87,000, right? We got big problems. It's not, you know, selling hot balls at the concession stand, we got big problems.
Yeah, but the only trouble is, you got to start somewhere.
Yeah.
You don't sit there and cry about the money. You start somewhere to help raise it.
Yeah, we can sell candy bars.
Instead of sitting there moaning about it, you got to get in wood, get digging, get it up. I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Sell candy bars and ho-hos and little diggers.
How, is the, is the, doing it in payments, is that something that would be, you would consider? Doing payments, is that something you would consider?
I'm, I can do, you know, alls I'm saying is, if it's a way to make a kid available or can play, if that's something that would work, you know, I may have someone say, no, we're not doing it all, but at least that option would be there, and if that's what we're agreeing that we could at least offer to some of them. See, the only problem with that is, I mean, I guess we would have to track it for myself, because say they played football, and we told them they had to spring to pay.
Oh, I'd give them.
What happens if it doesn't?
I'd give them like two months, I wouldn't, it's 50 and 30 dollars, they surely don't need.
They'll go on to next grade.
Mr. Clara and Mrs. Sutton and I went to one of our neighboring schools, and I know Charlie has been aware of this also, there are a number of schools that have foundations out there. Could we at least possibly research what, Scotty Foundation, Athletic Foundation, I know that that would be something that I would be willing to look into, you know, get some means at which we can support our sports.
Or pay-to-play?
I know there are a number of schools that are doing that, and that could be a viable resource or for us, or an option.
There's a lot of options, but I mean, there's always cons to everything, because once you start a foundation, then a lot of people decide they can't pay.
What about Scotty or Softmore, GoFundMe sports page? And the public can make any donations they want to these sports on a GoFundMe page?
I mean, these are all options that we can discuss. I think we have some immediate problems that we have to address. I don't think it's still been decided where that money is going to be deposited. and what do we do with those students that currently, right now, can't pay? Can we, can we approach the boosters and ask for them to assist us? I don't think we've really come to a conclusion.
And like I said, I mean, for the most part, I mean, it's, there's not many. There's, it's not, you know, but then again, my point is, when we get to a certain point, what do you do? You know, what do you say? You just gotta stop. Either you're paying, or we gotta come up with a plan, or you're not playing.
I would offer them the payment plan first, before I, you know, because like, like you said, the boosters are gonna be like, well, you know, she, she plays volleyball and she plays softball. Well, hit softball boosters up. You know, the volleyball parents don't wanna pay for her to play softball.
I'm a big advocate in children participating in sports, and I would hate to see a child not be able to, or not be able to play. I just think it's a character-building activity, and it has, there's a lot to be gained.
I think there's been some ideas, like I think Mr. Mash and Brian Pritz and a few other coaches have come up with, and I think it would be a good idea, even if we did at the end of the year, like had one big sports cash badge or some kind of thing where the money raised would go into that to fund those kind of things. But see, we're a little bit behind with that, but those are all ideas like we're talking about. If we had that foundation kind of thing, where all the sports coaches got involved, and if they needed some, it would be there. But it would have to be distributed, you know, because again, like I said, once you start, certain things change, and then when people think there's money, they're not gonna pay, and then you're fighting that battle.
That's Charlie, that's what they're doing now. They're doing their own thing, they're raising money to pay assistant coaches.
How many children?
Well, that was, I think, brought up by the board. We said, you know, if boosters wanna pay the assistant coaches, that that's what they could do, if I remember correctly. I don't agree with it either. I mean, it's, we get into some situations where we're not sure what the money's coming from or where it is, and why, you know, we don't really have any control over what they're doing with that money, where, you know, but that was an option we said. If we can't afford to pay the assistant coaches, the boosters raise money. And some of them have done that.
Does that have to be reported to you, if any organization pays money to hire a coach or pay a coach?
Some of them can, but most of them, I mean, that's all, they turn it, they are financed from the boosters, it shows where they spent their money. And that's where I see it. I turn that in for a Title IX report.
Some organizations don't have to show your money. And another thing too, how many students are we talking cannot afford to pay? Do you have a number?
I have an idea. I don't, I'm not gonna say it. Right now, there's probably, between band and sports that I know of, about eight.
How many?
Eight.
Okay.
And may even be a little less than that. Dallas' lowest five, because I think a couple of them came through. But there's, there's definitely two or three that I know that approached me and said, "Absolutely will not be able to get the money."
Offer, maybe you offer them a payment plan first.
That's what I would do.
We'll go from there and try to get the money. If we don't, well, they have to have it to get it to fund the proceed. That's, I mean, that's one way to recruit your money if it's not in. But if they're lower-grade children, then we're just gonna have to hope for them to get the money. You know, that's the way I look at it right now, because we just put this program in, and we don't have all the budget. And this is working, the budget's out the way out of it. Offer so much a month to pay, can be done with. That's the way I feel.
I don't wanna see any kid not play sports. Whether it's male, female, or whatever.
So, solution, the immediate solution, we will, we will reach out to those individuals and try to work with them in setting up some means by which they can, they can provide...
And then move it forward. We got some more time to think about what we wanna do moving forward with it.
If we decide where the money will be.
Is this booster money for the assistant coaches being paid directly to the assistant coaches, or is it coming to the school district to pay them?
As of right now, I don't know who they've paid or if they paid, but it would probably go directly to the coaches. They would pay, you know, I don't know, like they would pay somebody to come in and teach them speed camp or something.
I'm not an accountant, and I'm by no means a lawyer, but I, I have a, I'm gonna just voice my own opinion. I have a problem with that process, because I can see there, the possibility of misuse. I would feel more comfortable if there was a way that we can control that process. Once again, I'm just speaking...
Well, they wouldn't be an employee of the school, so they wouldn't, you know, insurance or anything.
I think, I think they...
They haven't been an employee of the school, they're out with the kids and doing the work.
There would be a volunteer coach that's getting paid from the booster organization. I mean, I think it's been done before with football.
Yeah, and if they're on the bus and something happens to them...
But they're a volunteer coach, they're approved as a volunteer coach, that they're getting paid from the boosters.
I understand, but let's say, if there's a wreck, there's an accident, who is that person assisting?
I'm not understanding what, I do believe that anyone...
The volunteer that's on the bus getting paid by somebody, are they covered?
Mr. Mornell's not here, but I did, I did...
Mr. Pritz brought it up the last time, he said, you know, whenever he has to leave to take a kid to the hospital, now that volunteer's in charge of their kids.
Yes.
Now, something happens to that volunteer, who's on the hook for that?
Good question.
Liability issue is what it is. It's definitely liability. So, if we had to cover any insurance, then we need to reach out to the boosters, say, "Hey, we need X amount of dollars a year to cover your volunteer" on our school bus or on our field of play. Because, hey, one, whenever something happens, people sue everybody down the line.
I will ask Mr. Mornell. I, I thought maybe, I heard that they are still covered through our insurance, but please do not hold me to that. I will ask Mr. Mornell that question for clarification.
If the school is gonna, if the money's gonna be funded through the school, you have to be careful about that, because then you have the issue 1099s for those as independent contractors.
I don't think it's funded through the school, though. It comes directly from the booster.
Yeah, well, I mean, if they decide to do it that way, they're gonna have to do it.
Well, we need to get back to where the money's going for the pay-to-play.
What'd you say again?
We need to get back to where the money's going for the pay-to-play.
I made my statement, give them the opportunity to pay the payments, if they can't afford it all at once.
No, the money that we've collected. Is it going into the general fund?
I'm concerned, I don't think it should go into the general account, because what happens if something happens, that you need a new football helmet or a new band something? You're gonna get the money out of the general account, it ain't there. Well, we can't afford to buy it. Whereas you have the athletic fund or the band fund, you go there, what's left over at the end of the year, put it in the general account, or put it in the athletic to override your budget for next year.
I think you might be discussing semantics here. Why can't you put it in the code of athletics in the general fund? It takes care of everything. It's...
But is it gonna stay there? Will it stay with the athletics?
What's that?
Well, because I, I don't think that all of us think that the money's supposed to stay with the athletics. Some of us, Mr. Carson feels it should just come off the bottom line. You know, I...
You're gonna have to put something like that out to a boat, I guess. And what thing was, it has to go into the general fund to go back into the school. You can't designate that money to each different little sport, because they can't sustain themselves.
I don't think we're charging for, to help support sports. We did to help fund.
Yeah, I mean, it can't go back to the general fund.
Is the band under the athletic department budget, Charlie? The band, is it under the athletic department's budget?
The band.
Okay, so it has to go in the general fund? Because the band pays pay-to-play, you can't put it in the athletic department.
Well, can't we split the bands and...
No, this is not fair, because you gotta put it in the general fund, and keep things going the way we are. You just cut their budget by whatever that generates.
So what you're telling me, then, is the sports, the parents of the sports people are paying extra for the deficit? Instead of paying for the deficit in athletics, we're just paying extra for the deficit of the all-ever district?
However you want it to fund, it's pay-to-play.
Otherwise, we would have to cut those particular sports.
It was gonna stay with, to help athletics. It wasn't gonna come off the bottom line, it was gonna come off the athletic bottom line.
Well, since Jim's not here, I don't know, but maybe the answer is to put it in the general fund and put it in the part that is designated.
I'm okay with that, as long as it stays with athletics. I don't think that, that just because our kids play sports, that it should, our money, I already pay my taxes.
I mean, in the scope of things, ten thousand is nothing. So, I mean, if we do put it in...
I'll bet to Charlie, ten thousand dollars ain't nothing.
But I mean, if we, if we do decide to put it in a designated fund for the sports, I mean, it's not like it's gonna break anybody anywhere.
Dave, have you looked at the motion that we passed about it?
No.
Let's do that and see what, see what you say about it, and then we can vote on it next week.
We need to do that, but we also need to confer with Mr. Mornell about how we set up the counts for the budget process and reports to Harrisburg and everything. And, and, you know, there's, there's some of those issues involved with this too, so we need, we're gonna need some information from him also.
So, is that something we can have for next week, Dave?
I have no idea, because he's not in and he's been...
Yeah, he's been out all week, so as soon as he gets in, that and the other issue that's next, the staff dressed on, obviously, how about if we just table that issue, and then I can approach Mr. Mornell with both of those issues and come back with definitive answers on both accounts?
Moving on, information regarding the Roughdale Building.
That's what I already mentioned.
New business. MOUWCCS.
The Board will be asked to consider an MOU memorandum of understanding between Southmore and School District and Washington County Children's and Youth Services for the transportation of children in foster care. Under ESSA requirements, every student succeeds act, we are pretty much mandated to do that.
Juvenile probation officers' agreement to carry firearms on school property.
The Board will be asked to consider approving an agreement between Southmore and School District and Washington County Juvenile Probation, which authorizes juvenile probation officers to carry firearms during commission of their official duties for defensive purposes only in district schools.
We can talk about that? Is that up for discussion? I think it's a terrible idea. I'd like to let Mr. Kiefer, you know, decide whether that's a good idea or not.
Mr. Kiefer, can, can you come to the mic, please? Were you able to hear?
Actually, Mr. Mash and I already talked about this. Any sworn officer, juvenile officer, they go to training qualifications annually, some semi-annually, and we both agree, a trained individual coming into the school is actually an asset in case something very bad happens. So, my, my suggestion is yes, but that's up to you.
We would equate that similar. I know that we have extended invitations to the Scottsdale policemen to come into our Scottsdale campus frequent, frequently. Would it be similar circumstances there, Mr. Kiefer? We, I mean, they're, they're permitted to carry their firearm in our schools, because they are commissioned.
Right, they're, they're all sworn officers, and even, you know, the juvenile probation, along with Sheriff's Department, local and state, and of course, by chance, if you have a federal officer, they're all permitted to carry firearms in our school district and our buildings. And like I said, like I said earlier, they're all qualified sworn officers. I mean, that's their job.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I just get some pictures on my part in the juvenile probation of scared guns. Things changing, that's it. But thank you.
Highlands Hospital?
The Board will be asked to consider the approval of an agreement between Highlands Hospital and Conneville and Southmore and School District for replacement of students in Highlands Autistic Support Program. The agreement is attached. Mr. Haichu and I went to the Highlands Autistic Program, and a benefit of this, when you're looking at the agreement, there is a cost associated with that, but I broke it down in keeping the confidence of individuals. We are currently paying total educational services for students roughly around sixty-four thousand dollars. If we put them in this program, we would have a savings, because this program counts their, their education, the cost of tuition, and the physical therapy, occupational therapy, and any speech and language that's provided to them, as well as the cost of the PCA, so it's kinda like a one-package deal. I really, I think it's a great opportunity for us to look at some potential savings. They are associated with the Cleveland Clinic and their autistic program, and that is one of the premier autistic programs in the country. And we are, and they are only one of two, I do believe, that is authorized to, to carry the Cleveland Clinic name, so it's, it's a stellar program that has the potential to save us money on our, on replacements.
What is the, what's the number to send a kid to?
Fifty-five thousand dollars.
Fifty-five thousand?
Yes. Structuring the way, we have other students that we could look, and Mr. Haichu is not here because he is also ill, but looking at other students that we have in similar situations, if we start looking towards bringing them into this program also. Now, obviously, I have not included transportation. When we look at transportation costs and we can consolidate buses, that savings could escalate, depending on the number, up to about forty-six thousand dollars. So, we're really looking at ways that we can, we can save by placements and alternative placements and consolidating transportation.
Do you give any kind of volume discount?
Not at this time, but they were very receptive to having conversations. Yes. Actually, I was surprised. They've been in existence for several years, they were just very low-key. Now, they've moved into the Zachariah Connell Building in Conneville, and they're really escalating their efforts to expand their program.
Is that an in-house program, or...
No. No, now, we also, Mr. Haichu and I also approached them with that question, because knowing the cost of in-house programming, and they were very receptive. Their ears actually perked up once we started asking those questions, because they don't have the facilities within the school, but being associated with the hospital, there could be some leeway with them having some rooms available for some. So, they were very receptive to the possibility.
As far as the cost of this, is this something that is going to be able to be put into the budget? I mean, how is this...
We're currently paying for the student in another school setting.
So, it's actually gonna, it's, okay, so it's budgeted, and it's actually, if we go this way, it's gonna save us money?
It'll save us nine thousand dollars right off the bat. And the way we, it would have cost us a little more with transportation, but we were able to consolidate some, a van that is taking other students to another facility, so by combining students on transportation, we're able to save a little bit more. And we're gonna continue to look at those avenues.
Policy two-three-seven, use of electronic devices.
In talking to Mr. Paton, we would like to review that policy just a little bit further, so we're gonna, we would like to table that.
SPHS, Westmoreland Drug and Alcohol.
The Board will be asked to consider school treatment services with SPHS through Westmoreland Drug and Alcohol Commission. We currently have that service, so it's an existing service we have.
St. Vincent, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen Service Delivery Agreement.
The Board will be asked to consider the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen Service Delivery Agreement with St. Vincent's College through Prevention Projects. Once again, that is currently in-house within our schools, so it would be a continuation of the program.
That is a twenty-six thousand dollar cost, and I've said it in the past, it's a great program, but there's no way to determine how successful it has been here. And I think that our staff here can put on an adequate presentation concerning drugs, alcohol, et cetera, and save us twenty-six thousand dollars.
Moving forward, Mr. Raul, I am not gonna just... Moving forward, Mr. Rell, I, I am not gonna disagree with you. Uh, I've actually talked to several of my administrators, and we do believe, moving forward, we have the capacity to, uh, to supplement that program. Uh, I think right now, we're not at that place, and, and with drugs and alcohol being such a major concern, I, I think we might be remiss, I know we would be remiss, because we're not properly prepared to address those problems that, that are currently there. I, I do, I do agree with you, and I, I do, in talking to my administrative staff, we believe that we have the capabilities within our own staff to address some of those issues.
But not right now?
I don't, I don't believe right now we do.
What do we need to do with it?
Uh, time and training and-
So going with this this year, and maybe, maybe next year, we'll have something in-house, uh, for people?
I, I would really like to delve further into this in bringing it into a, a more in-house pro, program. Yes. We, we have amazing staff, and I'm, I'm not just saying this because I'm the superintendent. I, I do believe that our faculty, uh, we have many, many talented individuals out there that, that have a lot to bring to the table, and I think we just need to start better utilizing their skills. And, and we're really searching ways of doing that.
Amy, are we moving on now to personnel? Because I have one item for new business.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I've been contacted since the start of school by a couple of parents, and I didn't know if there was any interest here, but I told them I would bring it up about reviewing the policy about drivers, student drivers, uh, being able to have a passenger. The ones that had contacted me were relatives. So it was somebody in the family that lived close by, and they didn't wanna violate the policy. Nobody's allowed to ride with a junior driver. I didn't know if we wanted to revisit that under several different circumstances. Under the Junior Pennsylvania License, uh, they're allowed one person, related or unrelated. And after six months, with no driver problems, they're allowed up to three, I believe it is. But, uh, I don't know if we wanna go that far. But do we wanna make just limited exceptions for relatives, if anything? Or, uh, no more than one passenger, whether it be relative or no relative?
I would be willing to sit down with the high school administration and, and take a look at that, uh, policy.
They brought me in a legal waiver, or they said they would give me a legal waiver. You know, so I don't know, that was drawn up by an attorney, so I assumed it was binding that says, you know, that, uh, they will follow the specific rules that we, we put on them, so.
I, I would be willing to enter a discussion with the administration concerning that.
To sidekick that, Ken, a little bit, I've been confronted about it as well. I believe that the student drivers pay thirty dollars a year to park for a pass.
I think it's thirty.
That is?
I think it's thirty.
Thirty? Yes.
Thirty dollars? Okay. You know, I had someone jump down my throat about it, and I said, hey, listen, we pay one point six four million dollars for transportation. My belief is it should be three hundred dollars a year for your kid to drive to school. Didn't go through it well, but yesterday, I, my daughter missed a school bus, so I had to drive her to school. And this is a budgetary thing, and, but I'm following this bus, she literally missed it by a minute. We're following the bus, I said, Reagan, how many kids are on that bus? She said eighteen. And there's a bus in front of her going the same exact route. We're picking up one here, one there, and one there, and I know I got people complaining to me about paying thirty dollars to park. Maybe we need to jack that up, and that would eliminate the problem of having co-pilots, and, you know, thirty dollars to park for a whole year? For what reason? They're probably not working, they just wanna drive their car. We're paying to transport those kids, one point six million dollars, and they're driving to school. And then we got a line just wrapped around the building for parent pickup and pair of drop-off. So we are definitely gonna visit this transportation thing, because it's a problem. I mean, that's a huge amount of money. For the amount of kids that get picked up and dropped off and wanna drive to school, you know, they wanna pay thirty dollars, that's a shame, it should be three hundred, three hundred fifty. Why are they gonna drive to school? I guarantee them, ninety percent of the party don't even work, they just wanna drive to school. So, you know, if they wanna have friends with them, you know, you wanna bring, you know, hey, you gotta pay to park, you know, just like you're going to Idaho, it's, you know, four dollars a kid to get into the parking lot. It's, it's, it's crazy. It's absolutely crazy that we let the community just dictate what's gonna happen. And we got a bus, a great big bus with eighteen kids that can fit sixty, that's, doesn't make any sense. Just doesn't make sense. The, the math doesn't make sense. And we're gonna sell candy bars to help, you know, fund our band. You know, we got, we got bigger problems. That's all.
I, I will have a discussion with our high school administration and see what we can bring to the table.
It may actually cut down on the number of cars, maybe, who knows? I mean, it's not gonna be anything significant, but I told them I would bring it up.
Motion to adjourn to personnel? You're in litigation?
Reese, are we coming back?
We shouldn't be coming back, right?
You may adjourn, yeah, you're right, you're right, sorry.
It's okay. Motion to adjourn by Gail, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Polakowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Well, guess what, the ayes happened.
Can we get her personnel when she's first, Dave?